Hello, everybody. Welcome to the January 11th Information Work Session and Happy New Year to everybody.
Happy New Year.
So I'll begin the meeting by just putting it in there for the record that the entire council was present. Now we'll do a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
And to the republic for which it stands, one may try under indivisible liberty and justice.
Amen. Okay, all right, let's get right to it. First item is the Richfield Station Water Tower Change Order. Holly, you want to give us an overview?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So the town council contracted with K&amp;K Painting for repairs to the Richfield Station Water Tower. We had budgeted $420,000 for this capital expenditure. Our contract with K&amp;K Painting was for $320,000, not to exceed $328,625. While the contractor was on site and the water had been drained out of the tower, it was realized that it was a good opportunity to actually clean the interior as well. So Jay had requested change order amount from the contractor while they're mobilized on site, and we have the request that we plan to bring forward to town council at the town council meeting for $15,000. In addition, there may be some patching that's required, and so we'll make sure that's added in as well or bring it back to town council. And Mayor, if you don't mind, allow Jay to just provide any additional updates for council.
Sure. Can you, can you hear me, Mayor?
Yes, Jay.
Sure. So just, just some insight. The interior of this tower was painted seven years ago. Then we had delays. We were going to paint the exterior just behind it. We had delays because of the state highway bridge project. We couldn't isolate the town. So now we've moved to the painting, and while it's empty, I wanted to get inside. You know, we can look from the top down full of water and see so much, but you can't get inside and look up until it's empty. And we clean, it's no big deal. There are some spot areas that I think we're going to come back and touch up, you know, not paint the whole thing, but I just wanted to make the council aware of, you know, kind of how we got here and why, why it's beneficial to do it now while our contractor's on site.
Very good. Thank you, Jay. If the council has any questions, I'll start with Peggy and work my way around the horn.
Sure.
Yeah, I do have a question. What was wrong with the interior of the tank? Is it just corroded?
Well, coming out of the ground, you know, everyone thinks we have city water, but basically city just has a big well. So coming out of the ground in this aquifer, we have three parts per million of raw iron, and we sequester that with a chemical that we add to the tower. So what it does, it settles out in the tank, and that's atypical. I was aware of that, and you can kind of see that from the top. What I wasn't aware of is above the water line, and I think it's because it's not a sphere. It's a conical tank where the two surfaces meet. There's a little bit of surface rust that I think we need to address while it's empty.
Okay, great, thanks. And second question is, other than the, these, the extra part here, are we in budget with K&amp;K?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Keith, any questions?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to be sure that I'm clear on this. So you've put in a change order for the contractor to do the interior cleaning and patching. And while, and it looks like there'll be some power washing as well, right? That's part of the cleaning. So there's a possibility they'll find additional issues with the power washing. Is that correct? And that there may be a little more cost when you come to, to the council meeting then? Is that what I'm hearing?
Correct. In other words, I anticipate some minimal spot repairs now. We could see some more when they power wash, but what they're really power washing is below the water that's normally in the tank. So I'm not suspect of too much more there. Most of the rust occurred above the water line, and we can already see that. But while we're in there, we have to power wash it to prep it to paint it anyway.
Okay. All right. No, it's all making sense. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Keith. And Greg?
Yeah, good evening, everybody. Okay, well, Jay answered one of my questions was regarding interior maintenance program of really all of our water towers. So this one in particular, I'm taking it that it was seven years ago was drained and interior was, then it or painted as a pro, as a maintenance item. I just want to paraphrase Holly's language here, just make sure I understand. So we approved the, we approved the contract for $328,625, but budgeted $420,000. Right? So the contractor is asking for $15,000 on top of the 325 and change. Is that, is that where we're at? You're just looking to approve that 15,000, and it's within the budget at 420?
Right. So we have a contract with them for $320,000. There was some line item costs that they had added in that could potentially get us up to 328, but we expect the, the project to be completed at 320, and we are requesting the $15,000 change order to take care of the interior, which is not part of the original scope.
Right. And then there may be some additional unknown things, which I can understand. You don't know what you're going to get into till you drain the tank out. Yeah, my only parting comment, really, I'm sure that our town, all staff has gotten interior maintenance of the, these towers on their maintenance schedule. Otherwise, I don't, I don't have any questions about it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And Larry?
No real questions, just a couple of observations. Even with the potential change here for the cleaning, which, by the way, I'm not surprised of the need to do that. That's something that always gets done when you drain one of these tanks because they're in service for such a long time. And when time comes to drain them, it's always good to get in there and clean them. As I look at the numbers, even with the $15,000 additional change here on top of their originally approved 328, 625, we still have about $76,000 left of our previously budgeted 420,000. So I'm good with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. And Charlie?
Yeah, I don't have any, any additional questions that haven't been asked. As always, my first question was going to be, you know, how do we know the contractor is, is reading this correctly? But I think you really covered that thoroughly, Jay. And as always, you're just, you're on top of it. So it sounds great. I certainly support this. It's what we need to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Dr. Bodine?
Yeah. So these monies are out of the utility fund, right?
Correct.
That's what I thought. And my only question is more of a long-term question. So we painted the interior of this water tank seven years ago. What is the lifespan of that interior paint job? How much longer is it supposed to last?
So, you know, typically 10 to 15 years on an interior exterior, but they're all subject to condition, change, ground temperature, where you're at. So the outside reflects the inside normally, except in this case, Richfield Station Tower, I think we all saw it, had some probably defects, honestly, from the original paint job. And whether it was the time of the year or different things that they did, what I'm going to do, and I've already looked into this, just, just so the council and mayor's aware, there are companies out there that will, we can enter into a maintenance program with them, and it boils down to about $120,000 per tank per year. And then you pay for anything that they find that is not standard. So it's not a viable option. What, what I try to do is look at it, clean it at times like this where it's cost effective, and really look at it and get it to last as long as it can. You figure if we paint it every 20 years versus every 25 years, that's one less painting. I know it sounds in 100 years, but the longer we can get out of them and, and the less we can rinse them, it's, it saves us a lot of money. So really what I do is I'm certified to climb. I climb them, I inspect them, I look down in them. But when we have a chance like this that they're empty and I can actually go in the tank, that's when I make a decision. And this time, I think, you know, we, we're getting away really with minimal work. Like Larry said, you're pretty much going to rinse it anyway when it's empty, and we have some spot paint jobs to do. And what I'm going to do is budget in now, inspect some of our other tanks that are, they're newer. You know, Chesapeake Village tank is newer, but it was painted before Richfield. So I'm going to go back and look at that one now next.
I totally got what you said. I guess, talking about cost effectiveness, I think that's where I'm going at, is interior paint. What, if we're, it's been seven years ago, and the minimal amount of time is 10 years, um, would it move us to even talk about or consider just repainting the interior of the tank, I think is my question, if it's already in seven years into its lifespan?
I don't think so. The rest of the tank is really held up below the water line, which is typical. And we should get 15 years out of that. I think we're, we're fine just spot painting and to, to strip it all down and to paint the interior now would be quite costly. I think we can rinse it, spot paint it above the water line and be good to go for another seven, 10, maybe 15 years.
Sounds good. No more questions. Thank you.
Sure.
Very good. Okay, next, snow plow emergency expenditure. Holly, you, you want to give us an overview?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. So we obviously encountered a great snow event recently. We have budgeted funds every year for snow and ice removal. In this fiscal year, we've budgeted $40,000. At the time of drafting this memo, we had only spent 500 of those funds. This year was, was unique, and Jay will give a more further intel as to what actually happened in the field. But there were some additional augmentation of public works staff more than we have had in the past, just due to COVID and, and isolating employees. So we do have an expenditure for one of the days that is over our threshold that we're asking for town council to approve of 11,60250. And again, that is within our fiscal year budget. And Mayor, if Jay could provide some information on that event.
Indeed.
Sure. So I'm sure we are all around or, or familiar with the snow. We had Sunday going into Monday. There was a couple of unique things. One thing Holly spoke of was the whole COVID procedure. We had a few staff sick, and we were trying to isolate and do different things. So we contracted out more than we typically would in this case. And we also had state highway was unable to get into town until the day after due to some downed power lines and different things. That's kind of water under the bridge. One thing I did want to say, we were fortunate as the town. We have budgeted before and were able to purchase backup components, you know, everything from spreader solenoids to plow motors, basically everything we needed for our equipment. Thankfully, we had already at Public Works, and believe me, we went through a good bit of it during the storm because we had some trees come down. We actually had one come down on the back of a salt spreader, different issues that I don't need to go into. But we are fortunate that we were able to budget and have on hand backup items that, that really paid for themselves because we would have had vehicles and trucks offline. And, you know, with COVID, supply chain problems, you cannot get snow plow parts. And with this late predicted storm, everybody was scrambling but us to find parts. And matter of fact, some of the parts that I've already reordered, they're talking about June, when I can get something as simple as a few solenoids. So we're going to invent some stuff to catch up. But I just wanted to relay that. It was, you know, kind of a unique storm. We had state highway unfortunately was shut out of town until 24 hours after the snow stopped, and there was a lot of things going on that led to this event, you know, to this amount of contracted help.
Thank you, Jay. If the council has any questions, I'll, I'll begin with Valerie.
Yeah, first of all, you have no idea how much we and residents appreciate your efforts during this last snow event. It is so comforting to know that y'all are there and on top of it, and you do a wonderful job. And thank the whole crew and including some contractors. It's really quite amazing what you all do.
Thank you.
Second, I'll say that having been on town council for so long, the way that Holly and Jay presented this, right down to the rate per hour, it's so appreciated instead of just saying, we need $11,602 to cover the snow removal costs. The mere fact that we're given this information is made public, and you have no idea how much it's appreciated. So this is really well-run. So thank you for that. Regarding the COVID-related expenses, I don't know if this is something that the state or the feds would reimburse for, but it's just something to think about. And finally, you mentioned the supply chains and new backup items. And so, you know, obviously fully supportive of whatever backup items Public Works may need or want. And with the supply chains, it brings to mind not so much with the snow removal event, but anything else that we may be doing in town that we should look to mitigate that risk going on. I'm thinking of items that might be needed for the water park, or when we reopen Bayfront Park, whatever the case might be. Know that at least, and I'm, I'm totally supportive of whatever sort of mitigation we can do for these obvious supply chain problems. All we had to do is go to the local grocery stores, drive in safely this weekend to see what a supply chain problem looks like with their empty shelves. And so, great job, and really, really well done. And this report is really appreciated, and it's really good. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Charlie?
Yeah, first off, got to echo, you know, what Valerie said, and I'm sure you're going to hear this consistently, but it's well deserved. You know, folks were out early. There were several plow runs made through critical streets, and, you know, we were able to get out and about remarkably efficiently. Of course, once we got to the store, there was nothing there. I'm wondering, Jay, if along with the solenoids, you got any extra spaghetti and meatballs to tie to over for June? You know, to me, the, the funds here are very reasonable within budget and, and get the work done. And, and, you know, there's no choice but to approve this. It is going to be interesting to see, you know, here we are, early January, we have more snow predicted Saturday, how close we get to our budget. But we didn't spend quite that much last year, so I guess it all evens out. I don't think I have any additional questions. Keep up good work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Larry?
Echo the previous sentiments. Jay, just a huge thank you to you and the public works staff for the excellent job during last week's storm. I think it's important to just remember that part of the problem with that storm was the inability of public works to pre-treat the streets because of the rain that happened before the storm. So there really wasn't any ability to get things ready before the storm hit us, and that's, that's why it had such a big impact. And just looking at the finances again, we budgeted $40,000 for snow and ice removal. Previously, we spent 500. This is 11,602, so that we still have a $27,900 balance in our snow and ice removal. Hopefully, we won't need that for the rest of the year. But Jay, thank you and your staff for all the hard work. Thank you.
Thank you. And Greg?
Yeah, I'd like to echo sentiments regarding the service that day. We know that was a wet and heavy sudden, I think it caught everybody by surprise that it went in heavy snow and the quick freeze that kind of accompanied that, that brief period of time. A lot of tree damages that were widespread, major power lines that were down. It was a crazy morning. So first, first and only time I'll probably ever be able to say that I rode the wrong way on 260, and it was okay. So but in short, I'm happy with the way the service was managed, and I'm certainly a windmill farms fan. So I'm in agreement with this. I just had a question about some of the rates here, if you could bear with me. It looks like we've got some operator rates here that are strict operator rates, and then we've got a handful of equipment rates that seem to be accompanied with operator. So I guess one, my first question, Jay, were on, all, everybody that's on this list here, they were a windmill farms employee or subcontractor at the time?
Correct.
Okay. And the folks that are listed under the $65 an hour rate, they're just operators. What were they operating?
So due to the situation, the town had some equipment, but we didn't have staff. So we actually had some hired people in our, one was in our Bobcat, one was in our Tool Cat, and we actually had one in our three-quarter ton state body plow truck. Not the entire time, but for some of the time.
So that's what I was guessing, was that those operators were utilizing town-owned equipment?
Correct.
Okay. Um, yeah, I probably can't say enough about the way the service and just really macro view on that, the way the state highway came together, those power lines being down, and we were really close to really being up the creek without a paddle for a little while there. And I'm just hats off to everybody involved that, that made this all of this stuff happen, not just the snow removal, but the power line repairs. Huge. I don't think I've ever seen a state move so fast and efficiently in getting something done there with the power lines that were down at Richmond Station. It was a dangerous situation as well. So hats off. Thank you.
Sure. And I wanted to follow up with that, if I could, Mayor, just to, just to mention windmill farms in particular, because I've worked with, he'll be the sixth different snow contractor since I started in '06 with the town. And there are very few contractors that will have one of their staff run your equipment, because it's not beneficial to them. He had some equipment that was sitting. We saved the town money by having an operator, and there's very few contractors that would even entertain that thought. They would rather supply the equipment and operator, make more money. And he worked with us, understood the situation we were in, and he really worked with the town and saved us some money. So I just wanted to pass that on.
Good point, Jay. Thanks for sharing that.
Sure. And Jay, if I can, thank you, because yeah, next time you see Les, we should say thank you, sir.
I will do that.
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay, Keith?
Thank you. Yeah, I can only add kudos to, to Jay and his staff and contractors. Only good things were heard about the work they did on, on my end of town, and so that was great. And I have no additional questions or concerns. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. And lastly, Peggy?
Hi. Two things. First of all, in addition to Jay and his crew working, I was really impressed by the information that came out of the town. Talk about the storm and what was going on and what we could expect and when we could expect it. I thought it was a really great job keeping us all up to date with how things were progressing in, in those icy road times. Now, I thought that was really super, too. And my second question is just a question about how do these things work? So the $11,000 bill is within budget, well within budget. Why does it have to be approved by the town council? Is it not just spent as part of budget, or is it because it's an extraordinary amount? Or why?
Holly, I think Holly would be appropriate to answer that.
Sure. Mayor, did you want me to take that question?
You can take it.
Okay. So it is because it's over the $10,000 threshold?
There's a $10,000 threshold. Okay, great. Thank you.
All right, thanks. Okay. Next, I'm going to lump three and four together for discussion. The first town council to consider canceling the August 18th, the August 18th town meeting, as most of you know, this is something that we've done for the past few years now, gives, gives staff a chance to schedule vacations and all that. And it's a break well appreciated, I can tell you that. And secondly, something that comes up no more than once every four years, town council to consider moving the June 16th meeting to June 9th due to a conflict with the MML conference. What happens there is the cost of state primaries every four years are held the last week in June. The MML is forced to move their conference up another week. And this week, this, this year, it happens to conflict with our meeting. So I'm just asking that we could just, you know, move it forward one week. So Peggy, I'll start with you, if you have any questions, and work my way around.
Yep, questions.
Okay, Keith?
Oh, I don't have any questions. I'm supportive of, of both of those. We've done the, the August 18th cancellation for a few years now. I don't see that there's been any problem with that. And with the caveat that if there is something that we need to meet about, we will do that. So, so yeah, thanks.
Okay. And Greg?
Yes, y'all know, I haven't been supportive of canceling the August meeting simply because the, I believe the town code says we shall have a meeting every month. That being said, notwithstanding the enjoyment and the, uh, what you want to call it, life benefits to everybody having a break in there, not just with Keith, as, as long as we don't have any pending important business to take care of, you know, on that, on that meeting. It hasn't been a problem in the past. And I have no issues with changing the June date. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. And Larry?
Echoing some of the comments, the August 18th, presuming nothing comes up, I'm, I'm fine with that. Question would be, would we also cancel the work session for August?
Not at this time, no.
Okay. On the change in date on the June meeting, same question, we would have to reschedule the work session, would we?
No, the work session that you received will not be changed. I think it was May the 31st or something like that.
Oh, okay, that early. Okay, okay. Nothing further. Thank you.
All righty. And Charlie?
Yeah, I echo what everyone here said. I think it's a good opportunity. Town staff has a break, opportunity to plan some vacations. Hopefully COVID will not prohibit that at this, at that point. And we're here if we need to be, or if we need to call a remote meeting, we can do that. So I'm, I'm in support of this.
Thank you, sir. And lastly, Valerie?
Uh, yeah, I kind of agree with what Greg said. I think that, you know, it does say we shall have a meeting, and so if we wanted to cancel that, I think we can cancel it while keeping it on the books. So we can simply say in the July meeting that we're canceling the August meeting. I've never been a huge proponent of just knowingly canceling one of our 12 meetings a year. And do we know if we'll have any comprehensive plan business that should go through August, or should we be complete by then?
Was that a question, or is it the end of your call? Yeah, I couldn't hear you. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Is there, is there, is the expectation that by the end of July, all comprehensive plan business will have been completed?
I can't, I mean, you know, I don't have a crystal ball in front of me. I'm sorry. I would hope so.
I know. That I just, I just, that's why I think it's.
But if, if not, we always have the option of a special meeting, like was said earlier. So it, it, those actions would not be delayed if it needed, if it needed to be taken.
Well, that, that's one of my concerns. I've never been supportive of just automatically canceling a meeting. So, you know, my opinion hasn't changed. That's for the June 9th meeting. No problem with that at all. The MML is a real benefit to the town.
Okay, thank you. Lastly, we've got the Ethics Ordinance Amendments proposed by the Ethics Commission. We have Phil here. Going to have the council, has received the documents to review. Phil's going to give a quick overview, and then we'll just take, 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 take questions from the council.
Okay, thank you. Let me participate. I just want to start by saying this, good reminder of how competent this town is. Good place. I'm glad to pay local taxes because you guys do a great job. All right. So what we got is we, the current ordinance was adopted in, I think, February 2020. Subsequent to that, we've had annual disclosures and the elections and a number of requests for advisory opinions. And as a result, the, the commission has recommends improvements in several sections, just to make it more efficient and, and clearer. One overall, one is we noticed that the disclosures are not limited to financial items. So throughout the ordinance, we want to change financial disclosure to public disclosure. We want to change. We want to change the request for advisory opinions. Uh. To say anywhere, anytime where conduct might present a conflict of interest. Rather than the current where you get an opinion only if there is a conflict of interest. Um. Want to uh, see twenty five, twenty three B. Um. Add that there's a a potential conflict if the person serves as an officer or director of an entity. Um, as in in addition to being employed by the entity. Uh, if we want to, where it currently says um. Can't receive a gift from a person, we want to make it from a person or entity. Um, obviously, uh, a gift from a company can be as um, as corrupting as a gift from an individual person. The deadline for uh, disclosures by um, candidates. Uh, we had some very good interaction with the Board of Elections last time around. And. This clarifies uh, or or changes things so that. The deadlines for disclosures fit with their um. Uh. Calendar. And it eliminates some things that uh, after consideration and consulting with council, uh, they. Decided uh, would. Or they they recommended us that we eliminate. It'd be three. Um. That we would uh. Provide copies of correspondence with the candidates and that sort of thing. Um. Let's see, review. Um. Clarify that um. The the real, the problems that have to be corrected, uh, well, actually, see what happens is. Every time we've gotten disclosures, uh. We have often had to ask the filer to um, either make clarifications or. Fill in blanks that were left, um, because almost always. Uh, defects in the way the form reads. Uh, I think we've ever just uh, found a deliberate attempt to. Uh, refused or a deliberate refusal to provide information. Um. But we wanna make clear that um. You. We have to notify people of a failure to complete the form or to sign it and that uh, that that. These problems have to be remedied within a week. Um, then we also add that um. The commission is now would be required to investigate any violations of the uh. Ethics law which are. Are 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 disclosed in the disclosures. Um, you know, that may be implicit. We wanna make it explicit. Um. Let's see, that twenty, the new twenty five, thirty five, we teach that that or or adds. That. We must investigate um. Any apparent violations that are disclosed in the disclosure statements or any other information. That becomes available to us. Um, we don't have the option of, we don't, we choose not to investigate. Um. In the potential criminal offense provision, um, and again, I think it's a matter of uh, clarifying that. Um. We, if we haven't reached a decision already, when we refer a matter to the uh. Prosecuting authority that we would then. Automatically stay our investigation until informed by the prosecutor that. Uh, there's no problem with going forward with it. Um. The uh. The overall investigation and I mean enforcement, um. It's been a mess um, in the past because of the. And what we have now is if we see, we think there's a a violation, we have to go directly to court. Um, because the. As a matter of due process. A commission like us can't find a violation uh, where there's disputed facts without a trial. Um, and the current uh. Ordinance doesn't provide any way of having a trial, so we've. We are suggesting that. Um, where there's a a complaint and there is a dispute over facts. Then we'll come to the town council and ask you to appropriate the money. To hire a hearing examiner to hold the hearing. Uh, to determine facts and then we will go ahead and decide the case. With those hearing examiners findings of. Uh, in front of us. Um. And then um. Also make clear that uh, so we're gonna, if we we make a finding of guilt and uh. Issue a uh, an order that's not complied with. Then we would go back, go to you, to the town council to ask um, you to. Go to court to enforce uh, what we had decided. Um, again, the current ordinance sort of gives the impression that we, a the Ethics Commission. Is authorized to go to court on its own and that does. Not appear to be consistent with way that the town operates. So that is, that's what we're recommending.
Thanks, Phil. Um, I'm gonna begin with Valerie and see if we have any questions.
Yeah, Phil, um, first of all, thank you for all of your efforts. Um, and of the uh, Ethics Board, um, your efforts are really appreciated. Um, on your first page. I'll just go through my questions and I may have some more after the other town council people ask their questions, but I'll try to get them all in. On the first page. Um, second to last sentence says, second, the Ethics Commission would add to the list of entities. Any that request to receive a grant or other funding from the town. So my question there is. How is, how is that based? So that would be based annually, right?
Yes.
Okay. So the, and so that means. When we get to our financial disclosures. We have a list of businesses that the town has done business with.
Yes.
But it would be included there. Is that a fair assumption?
Yes, if this were passed, then the uh, town administrator. Would provide in addition to the list of business businesses that do business. Uh, anyone who applied for or received a a grant or other funding.
Understood. Can you go to the second page, section twenty six dash twenty seven B? Twenty six dash twenty seven B.
Yes.
Alright. I have. I I mean, the only way I think about fixes, I put myself into that position. About whether I don't wanna do anything obviously unethically, nobody does. And so. What would I do in this case? Over the years, we've gotten whenever the Palm Beach players does a play. In our town council mailboxes, you'll find two free tickets. Is that, would that be unethical under this?
I think so, yes.
Okay. Second. Um. Since the inception. Of the N Hunger Dragon Boat Races. I've learned a lot. I've always been the team captain and I've always been in charge of the fundraising. And. Rightfully so, the past two years. Um, or maybe it's one year I've done no fundraising. I just paid the two thousand dollars in my own pocket and we get to rock and roll and I hope I'm doing it again this year. So. For the town of Palm Beach. Dragon Boat, as his captain. And previously its fundraiser, is it unethical for me? To pay the registration fee at two thousand dollars?
I don't know. Um. Yeah, I I. Now, uh, well, a couple of things, I can't answer a question like that. It it, you get an advisory opinion from the whole commission. And were I to answer the question, that would be unfair to the other commissioners who have equal votes with me. Uh, but so, hey, you know, what if you send an email? We'll treat it as an advisory opinion and um, it may lead to a suggestion or a recommendation. Uh, to change the uh, the ordinance so that it would, you know, whatever, whatever the council wants, whether. Want to prohibit that or want to permit it.
Well, it goes without saying that, you know, I don't wanna do anything unethical. Um, then. Moving down to. Twenty five dash thirty five. Um, it talks about authorizes imposing a late fee for failures to timely.
Yeah.
File disclosures. And this is my concern with imposing a late fee. And it is, I wanna do nothing. I I don't. I believe in our residents and I believe in our volunteers and I don't wanna discourage volunteering on commissions or boards. Or with activities in any way whatsoever. And so. I don't have a specific suggestion, but just know that I'm nervous. About imposing a late fee for failures for timely disclosure. I understand the need for disclosure. I believe in this ordinance. Um, and this part of the code. But. Anything that would discourage volunteerism, I'm nervous about and. I understand that the Ethics Board itself is a volunteer body. And. You know, they they should not have to continually have to harp on someone to turn in the disclosures, so I respect that part too. Um. Just, and I I noticed on the third page what those fees were, if I understood it correctly, which is all of. Um, it's in subsection D and E on the third page. Um, which is a late fee of five dollars per day and be assessed for delays in filing disclosures. Um. I'm just know that I. I don't wanna do anything that would discourage people from volunteering. And I hope that those people that wish to be on a board or a commission. And volunteer for position for the town do it because they want to do it and they're fully aware that they need to do the disclosure. And then if they don't do the disclosure, then maybe. At some point, they're not to be on that board or commission anymore. Um, so. I'll look forward to hearing what the other town council people think on this. Um, I just don't wanna do anything that discourages volunteerism and and that I. I'm not saying it will, but it could. Um, other than that, I have to commend you on the thoroughness. Of of this review. Um. And the thought that went into, I can imagine these deliberations, so I I thank you and those are are my comments.
Thank you, Valerie. Before I I go to Charlie, I I just wanna add that uh, I do agree with Councilman Bodine on that, that final issue. Thank you, uh, Charlie.
Yeah, um. I do have a couple overarching comments. I I think before I I jump into that, I wanna just offer the same thanks for the work here. Phil, you and your committee. Uh, continue to uh, really focus on these details and that that's great and it's necessary work in 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 this day and age. Um, so I really appreciate that and I think all the, all the council and the mayor do. Um. You know, my overarching comment is exactly what Valerie said and it's it and it's a little, maybe a little bit more broad. I've expressed this before. Um, this is, uh, th- this is not too. This is expressing a concern that I have not meant to be in direct conflict with the level of effort, Phil, that you guys are doing. We are a town of six thousand people. And the more people who are engaged and volunteer, the better. And I feel like the more that we can create a light touch with these ethics rules. Particularly for non-elected volunteers. Uh, the better. And so I look at some of these things like the uh, late fees. Um, you know. It it all, five dollars a day, it's it's it almost sounds, a- again, this this is a harsh word, so don't take it that way, but it almost sounds like the town's being petty. Um, to to collect a five dollar a day late fee. The library doesn't even do late late fees anymore. Um, similarly, the 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 discussion of criminal offense. And the potential that someone could volunteer to be on a committee and end up in court seems. Burdensome to me. It seems intimidating, maybe is a better word. It it it, you know, if we, if the Ethics Commission finds fault in someone's application. Would it be unreasonable simply to say that that the volunteer role is terminated and it ends there? Uh, maybe Todd will will nix that idea, I don't know, but but that seems um, kind of. A lot less intimidating for a volunteer uh, to to uh, to have. So so maybe part of this is also a separation between a volunteer and elected official. I don't know if that's even possible or or legal. Strike me a little bit. Yeah, go ahead. I'm I'm sorry.
Uh, there's. A mistake or an error in making disclosures isn't, is not possibly a criminal offense. What we're trying to deal with is. We discover that a potential contractor has given a gift to uh, an elected official. Or a a, you know, the uh, staff, a thousand dollars, right? And there is a concern that this was a bribe. Right? Well, that um, rather than us deciding whether it was a bribe or not. We would turn it over to the uh, whoever the prosecutor is, uh, because they have the the expertise on on criminal stuff. Um, so the criminal stuff is only, you know, the the criminal referral would be only for things which in fact are crimes. Uh, in contrast to um. A conflict of interest that doesn't involve an act, you know, a a a bribe of any sort. Um, it, these are the, there's, I guess what it, what we're getting at, there's an overlap between. Civil ethics stuff that's in our ordinance. Some of that stuff could be a crime as well. And all we're trying to say here is um, we don't get into the business of charging anybody with crimes. That's totally up to the, to the uh, state. Um, and on the fines, um. I if if. With our recommended changes, uh, nobody could actually be fined except by a vote of the town council. And we can, we can say, uh, you know, this person. You know, deliberately or or without any good reason, uh, delayed um. Filing the disclosures for uh, you know, two or three weeks and you ought to pay some bucks. In the past, the only people who have been fined. Or untimely disclosures have been members of the Ethics Commission. Um. And what we certainly have done, every time somebody says, I'm gonna be on vacation, I'm gonna be out. and what we certainly have done, every time somebody says, I'm going to be on vacation, I'm going to be out of town, uh, you know, uh, can I have an extra week to, to file a disclosure? The answer is yes. Right? Because it would be petty and stupid and discouraging to people to volunteer if, uh, you know, they, they get caught in a gotcha situation or they, you know, it, the disclosures arrive after midnight on the deadline date and we're charging five bucks. You know, nobody would do that. But I think we have, under our recommended changes on enforcement, um, nobody could be forced to pay unless the town council, um, in fact, you know, authorizes funds to, uh, take the person to court. So if, if the Ethics Commission goes rogue and starts harassing people, um, you know, that, you can, you can stop us.
If I can just, uh, say something to Charlie before we get back to him and his line of questioning, uh, Charlie, while this, this does encompass appointed board members, it does not encompass committee members like, like yours, uh, for instance. Okay?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, you have, continue please Charlie.
Yeah. So, um, I mean, again, it's good feedback, Phil. Um, I, I, I think for me and, and for me, it it's, it, it reads as intimidating. Um, maybe I'm unique in that. I'll, I think I'll pass the gavel here. Um, I think I've, I, 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 I respect all the points you've made. Um, no one's ever going to write a check to, to the town for $5. Um, I understand that. That's not the intent. Um, but it, it, you know, if, if someone's debating getting involved and they're, and they sit down and read this, uh, they're going, uh, there, there, there is a chance that someone is going to be like, what? No. And, and sort of ask on the opportunity to be more involved in the town and I, I'd hate to see that happen.
Okay. Well, now remember the current ordinance has, authorizes the commission to assess a $2 a day, uh, late fee. Um, if, you know, in principle, you know, could, uh, simply repeal that and not replace it with the $5.
Right.
Or you could take our recommended, you know, leave everything in as we recommend it, except change the $5 back to two. That's where we're not, I mean, we thought about it. We think it does, you know, obviously.
Well, but we'll be able to figure that out, Phil.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah. So, okay. So I think I've, I've expressed my feedback. I will pass and thank you for, uh, clarif- clarifying and, and, um, it's a good discussion. So I'm going to pass the gavel at this point. Um, thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. And Larry?
Well, my comments are going to follow my colleagues' previous comments in virtually all the categories. One is thank you, uh, Mr. Keat and the Ethics Commission for your hard work on this. It's much appreciated. Um, I just share some of the concerns that have already been expressed. Um, again, just talking about it, you know, we're a community of 6,000, but in any community, what you find is it's a very small number of people who are actively engaged in activities associated with that community. And in most cases, what you find is the people that are involved are involved in multiple activities, not just one. So some of the issues that are being raised here, I think, uh, might potentially, um, adversely impact people, uh, getting involved in things. Speaking personally, I have some, uh, I don't want to say concerns, just, uh, questions, I guess I'll say on some of this that I was going to bring up, but I think you raised a, a good point a while ago, and I will just submit a, a request for an advisory opinion on them because of my involvement, not only on the council, but serving on other organizations like the Railway Museum, like the fire department. I'll, I'll just submit you a request for an advisory opinion. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. And Greg?
Well, yeah, thank you. Uh, I'm going to follow right in behind, um, Councilman Fink and Jaworski's comments. Um, there, um, volunteerism is, it's okay. Um, we haven't had that in short supply around here. Um, there is a degree of seriousness required though, with aspects of most of our boards, especially elected officials. Um, that includes timeliness and being forthcoming. Um, and so having some mechanisms in the code that, that are kind of like a pressure to, to make people fall in line with these very important disclosures, is, is something that we need to carefully weigh. Uh, and I'm not opposed to the language and the changes that you're suggesting regarding that, that matter in particular. Um, I would just be cautious of, um, you know, removing, removing some of that, that, that pressure that we have in there that, that, that requires the, the forthcomingness and the timeliness. That's essential in some of these, uh, procedures that they'll go through, particularly like dealing with elections. Um, but let me back up here. Um, I want to back out of this whole thing a little quick here. Uh, Phil, thanks for some of your clarifications here. Uh, I want to thank you and your crew, uh, personally, I'm going to let them know. Now, your group lost a member last year, didn't you? Was that?
Yes.
Again, condolences for that. And that's really difficult to get through. You all were a nice tight grip, uh, ties, a nice tight, tight knit, uh, group there. Um, so glad that Phil and others have been a constant for us here on ethics. I mean, it hasn't just been a year or someone decided to go at it a couple of years. Uh, you know, you've got an expert, you've got somebody that's, people that are really qualified to delve into this stuff and trying to do what's best for the town from, from a, uh, independent, if you will, third party perspective. That's important. Um, you've got a new committee member, I, I believe now.
Yes.
And, uh, but, um, that constant that I've referred to for ethics, uh, this fine tuning is a result of that. You're not going to get to this degree, um, in, in this carefulness with a, with a revolving door. You know, so, uh, that being said, uh, looks like I've, I've identified about 13 items in here and there's some subsets to those items. Um, my comments are a little bit without full context. So, you know, excuse me here. Um, I applaud several of these changes. Some of these changes I see were recommendations from the council previously. Uh, and we're, we've been allowed to weigh in on some of this stuff and I see some of this stuff kind of coming full circle and that's awesome. Um, so, uh, any pertinent questions, Mr. Morris here. Uh, item three, where you were talking about, uh, that's on the first page, uh, 25 dash 23B. Uh, that seems like we've carved out a little, kept, kept a little space in there for some HOAs, uh, for those of us, and I didn't run this last fall, but, uh, being able to serve on an HOA, at least as a, um, member at large. Um, let's see, the item four, page two, section 2526, it says you bar certain persons from intentionally using the prestige of office for certain reasons. Uh, going to say that we think the bar should be enforced, even if conscious intent to violate it cannot be proven. I was just wondering what that meant. That last sentence in that section there, we think, yeah.
Right now it says, "A covered person may not intentionally use the prestige of office or public position for private gain, et cetera." We're suggesting we say, say, "A covered person may not knowingly or intentionally use the prestige of office." Uh, this is this is not crucial to keeping the town honest. Uh, it just occurred to us that proving that it was intentional is more difficult than proving that the person knowingly used the prestige of office for, uh, wrongful motives. Um, the, the current language, I believe, is what's in the, in the state minimum requirements. And this would make the Chesapeake Beach ordinance a little stronger than the, is the minimal required by the state. So it would, it would be more, it would be stricter.
Okay. That's, that's a check from me there. A little further down the page, uh, 25 dash 32, there's a paragraph there uh, that involves, uh, barring the bar of elections for issuing certificate, dot, dot, dot. That particular language change, is that, but is that, um, I presume the board of elections that, that's been discussed with them and they're in full agreement with that change?
Absolutely. Um, yep.
Awesome. Okay. Uh, all right. Uh, I don't really have too many questions here. Let's see. Third page. Um, you know, really, I think my last comments regarding really the last paragraph on the last page, subsection E, and you've got some language in there. Changing the deadline for seeking relief from 90 days to 180 days. Um, your reasoning for changing that, uh, to a, to a half of a year?
Yeah, I'm trying to, hold on a second. Let me, me collide with you here. Yeah, just, uh, hold, hold, just give me one second. Let me find it.
Understood.
Yeah, let's see. I believe, or says, "The current ordinance consistent with the minimal requirements of this state is that a court cannot void an official action because of conflict of interest unless the lawsuit is brought within 90 days of the occurrence of the official action." And it just occurred to us that that may be too short of a time between when the, the, let's say an ordinance was passed and we discover, or somebody complains about it and we hold some kind of hearing and you know, consider the matter, issue a decision and then, you know, we'll go, come to the town council to authorize a lawsuit to enforce our finding that 180 days is more, gives us enough time to do that and 90 days may not. You know, the general language comes from the state and it's hard to imagine this. Um, you know, I, I think their theory, apparently they want it possible that you know, we find that a, or if the truth is that an ordinance has been passed because of conflicts of interest among, you know, majority of the town council. Um, there's got to be a way for the, you know, for the, in the public interest to have that action, um, you know, a court rescind that action. I I find the scenario difficult to to forecast ever hap- happening. But if it is, if we, we have to do, we have to take that possibility into consideration. Uh, we thought that the 90 days, uh, was too short, but certainly, you know, this is the sort of thing where um, if you guys decide, keep it at 90 days, uh, you know, that's, that's your judgment.
I'm okay with the change. Uh, I appreciate your explanation there. That did help clarify, kind of helped me wrap my head around that particular item a little more. Uh, thanks to Ethics for pulling this all together. I know it's always a lot of work.
Um, thank you.
Thanks, Phil.
Uh, the mayor keeps cutting in and out, so, uh, we'll go to, um, Keith next.
Thank you. Appreciate it. And, uh, thank you, Phil, and the commission for all the work you've done, uh, on this. Uh, it's been a long road. I have a couple of questions for you. One, I just wanted to, um, make a statement that although, you know, this is a small town of 6,000 people, there's a lot of money that flows through this town. Um, there's hundreds of millions of dollars that flow through this town. Um, and we know that from the, uh, the taxes that we receive, a half a percent. So, you know, that's a lot of temptation to alter the course of policymaking, um, in other people's favor. We're also right on the, the waterfront. A lot of expensive property. That's a lot of temptation to influence planning and zoning and, and others. So I think it's important to have a strong ethics and I don't think $2 to $5 really is going to be that big of a, um, threat to volunteers. Uh, so anyway, and as, as already been said, it doesn't apply to all volunteers. It applies to elected officials, to employees, to those on the various commissions and boards, not to those people on the opioid, uh, committee or, or economic development committee or, or others. Um, so anyway, I just wanted to add my two cents on that. Um, the one question that I had, um, had to do, what's the second page, 25 dash 32B? Um, and I, what I just didn't quite understand the, the reasoning there on the fine, finally, the last, I think it's the last sentence. Finally, current 25 dash 32B3 should be eliminated because it incorrectly implies that either the Ethics Commission or the Board of Elections can bar an otherwise qualified candidate from the ballot based on deficiencies in his or her public disclosure. And if, if you could just help me understand that a little bit better. I've read that section in the code here. I have it in front of me and I'm just struggling with that.
Okay. Several points come together. One is, and this is all in consultation with the Board of Elections or we're just incorporating what they asked us to do. The current law in first of all, it tries to put into the ethics ordinance, stuff that should be, if it's going to be in the law at all, should be in the election code. Right? Um, clearly the, the current law says, um, the Board of Elections may not issue a certificate of candidacy in certain cases. Um, and the Board of Elections believes that it can't, the town can't give it legal authority to, to bar a candidacy. I mean, you file, you know, Joe Smith files a, uh, declaration of candidacy and and Board of Elections understands the law to be, the state law to be, that person goes on the ballot. Um, it, we what we do is as a matter of, well, we do we are requiring, we say we require people, those people to file, um, public disclosures. Um, and the voters get to review those disclosures to see if any information affects their, their political judgment. I guess we would also put into the record, this person failed to provide disclosures and that would affect the, the voter's judgment. But the, the current law that says, under the ethics ordinance, the Board of Elections may not, um, issue a certificate, uh, based on information they receive from the Ethics Commission. Uh, the Board of Elections judgment is that, uh, that's, that's not part of their role.
Okay. All right. Um, thank you for explaining that. I I'll have to, uh, discuss with other people to see where I fall on that, but I appreciate that. Um, and then my last question is, okay, let's say, you know, we approve this or we approve it with modifications. Um, what, what is the next step? Does it have to get approval from the state Ethics Board again, or how does that work?
Absolutely. Good question. Um, because there is a lot of misunderstanding of that. No. You amend the ordinance, it is the ordinance of the town of Chesapeake Beach, right? We have to submit the amended, um, ordinance to the state for its review as to whether its conflict of interest and disclosure provisions are at least as strong as are required by the state law, right? Um, if they find that some provision, you know, section 2536DB is not sufficiently strong, they inform us. They don't repeal it. They don't stop they inform us. They don't repeal it. They don't stop, they don't change what we have. They inform the town that it has to change this section. And we, I, I don't think they even give a time limit. Um, but it, it's, this is not a situation where the town doesn't have the authority to amend its own ordinance without the permission of the state, or it's not a situation where it's not effective until approved by the state. So that's, that's, that's all that the state does is the worst that ha- happens is, as happened, you know, five years ago, they put us on a list, following towns do not have an ethics ordinance that meets the state requirements. And the, the mayor, then the new mayor then said, you know, this is not good for our ability to, uh, get services from the state. So, but that's all that happened. We make the amendments, we submit it to the state. And they, I think this, it was COVID or staffing problems, they are not moving very quickly on anything. So that there's no, I don't think there's any, any threat, uh, no matter what you do, if you turn, turn, approve everything as suggested or approve none of it or some of it, uh, there's not going to be any threat to the continuation of an ethics ordinance here.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. I have no further questions.
Thank you, Keith and Peggy.
All right. Well, you're going to be shocked. I have no questions. I think everybody's answered everything. I could have asked and a few more. Thank you, Phil, for your committee and its work.
And I'm not going to give you an answer.
Who are you? What happened to Peggy?
Do, uh, does anybody have any questions of Phil before we send him on back to his evening? If not, I'll say thank you, Phil.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you guys for everything.
Council Lightning Round, Peggy, you're up.
Um, oh golly. Uh, I would just like to say, um, I thought the, the ethics discussion was just fascinating today and thank you for that.
Thank you, Peggy. Uh, Keith?
Hey, I have really nothing much to add except to wish everyone a great evening and, uh, look forward to seeing you in a couple of weeks at our next meeting.
Very good. And Greg?
Oh yeah, I'd like to wish everybody a happy new year. Um, it's another, another year, uh, to live in our remarkable and growing Bayside Town. Um, we're facing some difficult issues. And, um, looking forward to our ability to engage those issues here as, as, as the town council. That's it.
Thank you, Greg. And Larry?
Uh, Happy New Year to everyone. I hope everyone got their town calendar in the mail. If you need more, they're available at, uh, a number of locations around town. Roland's Town Hall, Library, Community Center. Just look around, they're there. And, uh, just hope everyone stays safe during this, uh, current wave of this craziness that's going on. So stay safe, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. And, uh, Charlie?
Yeah, a couple of things real quick. Just another round of thanks for the work that, uh, Public Works did and, and, and keeping our streets clean and safe and, uh, looks like we got a little more coming over the next month. So, um, keep up the good work. Uh, definitely stay safe out there. Uh, you know, COVID is, uh, making things a little, little challenging again. It is cautiously optimistic. They will be through this current surge by the end of January. And, and if that, you know, it's good to be safe now, uh, so you're healthy when that happens. Hopefully that will remain true. Uh, and lastly, we will have a walkability, uh, committee meeting on the 24th, Monday, the 24th at 7:00 PM. That'll be on the town calendar. Uh, we have a handful of kind of fun things going on. Uh, as always, a public will can be engaged in that. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. And lastly, Dr. Bodine?
Oh yeah. First of all, once again, thanks to Public Works and all the town staff on the, uh, really wonderful, uh, snow removal operation that they did. Thank you, Phil and the Ethics Committee. Um, that's a lot of work and it is truly appreciated. And you can tell by the number of questions that town council had that we're engaged and we like this discussion. And so, thank you. There's a Green Team meeting on Thursday, January 27th at 6:30. And if you're interested, uh, when the temperatures are about, well, in the mid 40s, we're going to try to do some more woodland maintenance and English ivy cleanup. Um, so if you're interested, please reach out through my town email or contact Town Hall and they'll give you my telephone number. Um, and that's for, uh, the continuation. This is the best time of year to really clean out some of that ivy that grows, um, up the tree trunks and sort of save our trees, if you will. Other than that, I just, uh, wish you, as Greg said, a happy new year. And that's all.
Thank you, Valerie. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
And the eyes have it. Good night, everybody.
Good night, everybody.